Welcome, everyone. Happy two or three, four days after Halloween, whenever you did your trick or trick or treating. Um, anyway, I'd like to call to order the City of Lawrenceburg Board of Works meeting for November 4th, 2024. Uh, can I get a roll call, Mr. Fettie?
All right, we got Board Member Tommy Rulet.
Present.
Board Member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dell Weldon.
Here.
Kelly Milan.
Here. Okay. Uh, announcements, guys, I got just a couple to fill you in on and, uh, the construction manager position, uh, got taken down from the internal bid. Um, there were seven people that signed it, so Jenny is, uh, gonna be interviewing those seven to make sure they fill the criteria, uh, and then we'll go from there. And then, uh, it looks like, uh, interviews for the custodian position is coming up. Are you guys are reviewing those, is that right?
Thursday, yes.
Okay, good, okay, all right. Um, and then I'll, uh, I'll, I'll address another one in new business that just came about, that's why it's not on your agenda.
Gotcha.
Um, any other announcements from either one of you gentlemen?
I have nothing, ma'am.
I have none.
Okay, if not, approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This is.
Uh, new business, this is not on your agenda, uh, just came about, um, late Thursday, early Friday, and then it happened. Uh, our landscape technician position, um, uh, resigned. And, uh, took another position somewhere, some other city. Um, so, uh, what I'd like to do is get your permission to go ahead and let Jenny post the position internally for the landscape technician position. Uh, I told her she didn't need to be here tonight to ask for it, she had other things going on, like I said, it just happened. Um, so we would post that internally first, see if we get.
Well, that title remained the same, then, landscape technician.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, the job description stays the same and things like that, yeah, absolutely. And then, you know, she'll keep you up, keep us updated on who signs, if anybody's qualified, whatever. Uh, can I get a motion though, to, any questions regarding?
I have none, ma'am. It's a bid we just had written here recently, so I don't think there's anything you need to add to it.
No, no. Um, can I get a motion then to allow Jenny to post, uh, the landscape technician position internally?
So move, ma'am.
Second?
All second, ma'am.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I don't have any other new business nor old business for the Board of Works meeting. You guys got anything under old business that I didn't?
I have nothing, ma'am.
If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next meeting, I'd like to call to, call to, let me talk about that a little bit. Call to order is, uh, City Lawrenceburg Utility Board for November 4th, 2024. I get a roll call, Mr.?
All right, we got Board Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Board Member Tommy Rulet.
Present.
Board Member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board Member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
Here.
President Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay. Um, I have no announcements for the utility board tonight, uh, to share. Um, if no other announcements, um, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion will carry, thank you. New business, uh, Mr. Garrett Kavanaugh, booster station rehabilitation.
Hello, hello?
Pretty important.
Yeah.
Pretty important.
Um, this is a rehab that's been needing to go on for a while. We had a, there's three pumps up there, one pump pumps directly out of the, uh, reservoir itself, it's a vertical turbine pump. And it had, uh, gone bad a while back and, uh, some electrical gremlins and. So anyway, we go, uh, put a new VFD in there and got it going and, uh, we did, where there's still a little bit of electronics, some, some of the controls to get it to work off our telemetry. But once we get that done, um, we need to be able to isolate the booster station itself from that. That pump will actually feed Ludlow Hill, but the, all the piping inside the booster station needs to be rebuilt. Um, added, um, some concrete, uh, the pumps, um, the flooring's made out of metal, it's getting weak, pumps are moving a little bit, so. That's what the, the bid's here, I, I solicited a couple other companies and then they just didn't have the time to, to go look at it or come back, so. And I feel pretty good with these, the two that we got here, they, they're both competent, uh, people and do a lot of work for us.
Um, I, I had to have Garrett explain to me what, what this really means, okay? Um, this is, uh, it, in, in a nutshell, it's, it's sort of a, uh, I, I'm, I'm calling it an emergency situation because if this booster station goes down and that pump that we have that's gonna do, work as the bypass isn't fixed, all the water from the water tower will.
Go down to industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, we, we need to get, we're working on getting the, the, the.
Pump one, yeah, pump one back online.
Back online, and then, then we'll have to rebuild the booster.
Correct, correct.
The piping and whatnot, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, like I said, um, the, the nuts are, are just completely eight, yeah.
Yep, I'm on with you.
There's nothing but a rust ball, it's, there's 200 pounds of pressure on that, uh, top side. It's, uh, so it's kind of amazing that it's still holding together, I mean, every time you go in there, you're a little nervous.
Needs to happen.
So, um, and like I said, if it, if it lets go, it's gonna cost us millions for all the electronics and stuffs up there, the hill will be without water for a month or two. Um, so it's, it's not a good thing.
Okay, you have Quality Fire has two different pricing, one's stainless steel and the other is regular ductile pipe, I believe.
Correct.
And then you have DeBrau, correct?
Yes.
What's your recommendation or what are we doing here?
Well, um, like I said, what's up there now is ductile iron and it was an epoxy coated, so, uh, you know, it, it's eaten up. So, uh, what I had first looked at was to do the ductile iron replaced with epoxy coating on it so it would last a while longer. And then both these two companies just come right up with, uh, stainless steel they felt would be better, um, than, than that, it would last longer, it would be easier to do quicker, um, than to get the flanges built and all that stuff. So, uh, DeBrau just went ahead and went with, uh, the, the straight stainless steel. And then Quality, of course, they, they went ahead and quoted it both different ways, um, the stainless steel ended up being a little bit cheaper, uh, Quality than, than what the ductile was. Um, like I said, I, I think both companies are very, very competent, can do anything, I would feel just fine with, with Quality doing this for the, the cheaper. I mean, it's $15,000 or so cheaper. So, um, I, I definitely think they would be.
Your recommendation is Quality Fire Protection then?
Yes.
For $107,800? That's to rebuild the booster?
Correct.
How soon do you think we can have that, that pump ready to go?
Um, it depends on the controls, uh, Jay's getting back to me when, that's been the problem, um, David Porter, I know you've heard his name before, he's the one that set all that stuff up, but he's tied up in Chicago and I've been trying to get him down here for a while and he finally gave me the okay to, you know, um, find somebody else if, if we could. Well, Jay does our front street, it's front street lift station over here, it's pretty, uh, pretty intense, so I feel comfortable with him, but it's still a process of getting him here, hopefully within a week, week and a half and.
Jay from Techline?
Yes, yes.
So we're gonna be good with this? Do we get it fixed? We're not gonna have to worry about not having no water, I need to take a bath.
Um, no, we, we gotta worry about not having, I mean, it's, it is what it is, it, it could let go, it could be letting go right now or it can last for a little while longer, but I mean, it just, it's. Yeah, it's, yeah, we're, we're on borrowed time right now, so it just needs to be done quickly.
How come, Garrett, how come we let this, you just didn't say it or?
Uh, part of it was, uh, there was a process, you know, and like I said, I know Andy had even brought it up, uh, prior to, um, him being out of here, uh, to go ahead and get it done. And it just kept getting kicked, we kicked to the back burner and, you know, just, um, and then, of course, there's plates over top of the, the bolts. So really, just out of sight, out of mind, and until we really was doing something up there and pulled them back and it was like, oh, oh. Um, those things are, are pretty bad. Um, and what actually started it was the top side started to leak a little bit, so there's a little drip. So, when we, when we, you know, when we noticed that, we started looking around a little bit better and took the covers off and here we are.
That was like a package, I want to say package plan or something when you first put it in?
Yeah, yeah, it was a tiger.
Set in there and.
Yeah.
Guys ended up doing some concrete around it or something, right?
Right, 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 it was a tiger system, so the whole thing was like a, a portable.
Yeah.
Building that was.
I can remember.
Like a giant walk-in box. And then we built a building around it and then took the walls down on that and did all that, but.
So, have you looked at both these bids and they're both, uh, they cover what we need?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
And just to be full, the, the controls, which we've already paid for the wiring and the VFD and stuff to be installed for pump one, but we will incur a cost of, uh.
Jay's.
Jay's.
Yeah.
Yeah, to do the controls.
That'll fall under main.
Right, that'll fall under main, yeah, I mean, that'd be a budget, that'd come out of the budget.
Whiskey City and put in the drive and everything.
Correct, correct, yes.
And then Buckeye redid the pump or the motor or something.
Buckeye redid, uh, um, generator.
Generator.
Right.
Yep, yep, that's right.
Well, and it's, they've still got some work to do on it also, I got a quote today on some more stuff they gotta do.
All right, any other questions from group? If not, then, uh, I guess I'm gonna entertain the motion to approve $107,800 from Quality Fire Protection for the, uh, pump station rework.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thanks, Garrett.
Thank you, guys.
Can you stay for the?
Yeah.
Water sewer line dedication?
Yes, yes.
Had your glass.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next is the Bodie Lift Station Project, uh, BFNS, and, and Garrett, you're a part of this as well, but uh, you guys are aware of this project, I believe, uh, Billy, it's discussed with us and finally were able to put some, some numbers to the project and, uh, ready to put it out for bid.
Uh, that is correct, uh, good evening, for those who don't know me, my name is Jeff Meyer, uh, work for Butler Ferment and Seifer assisting, uh, you all on, uh, several projects, one of them being the Bodie Drive Lift Station. Uh, just to recap, the Bodie Drive Lift Station is a lift station at the end of Bodie Drive in the cul-de-sac, it's actually situated in the pavement, um, underneath the casting, which is quite unusual. The lift station serves five houses. Uh, the lift station has, has kind of fallen into disrepair, um, it's, it's in need of rehab if it were to stay. And, uh, to be honest, a lift station constructed in that manner, I don't think would be approved, uh, today to be underground in the pavement with all the controls and everything over there, it's not a good situation. Uh, the lift station serves five houses, three of them flow to the lift station via gravity, two of them have their own private grinder pump stations that pump into the wet well of the lift station. The intent of the project is to eliminate the, the Bodie Drive Lift Station entirely. So this summer, uh, you all are probably aware that, uh, the three homeowners with their gravity sewer laterals were approached with the letter, um, letting them know that this was the intent of the utility to decommission that lift station as well as having them sign a right of entry and agreement of installation to transfer their three gravity laterals to private grinder pump stations that they would then own that LMU would install at the cost of the utility. The two remaining houses that have their own private grinder pump stations would have their lateral force mains tied into the existing common force main at the Bodie Drive Lift Station with, with check valves and things like that, but, uh, that would allow the lift station to be completely decommissioned. Um, the estimated cost of this project, engineer's estimate is $200,000, it's $200,550, but we'll just call it $200,000 even. Um, and, uh, with your permission, I, I, I think we would like to advertise that for bidding as soon as possible to get the bids back on the December Utility Service Board meeting. Substantial completion is targeted for the end of March with the final payment being at the end of May so that we can verify that grass is grown back in these people's yards and that everything is made whole on these people's private property.
I've got, I'm very aware of what the situation is, that's actually my district and right behind me. Again, I'm really surprised, like you said, there's one in the ground, so when they tie the nanzes in because they're already grinder pumps, will that still stay like a pit where you can get in there with them check valves or is that gonna be all filled in?
It's gonna stay like a pit, we're gonna, we're gonna take all the lift station stuff out, fill it up, flow will fill to the bottom, but leave that piping there interconnected so that way it is serviceable, so. The common force main would still be owned and maintained by LMU. The homeowner's responsibility will pretty much end at those check valves are gonna be installed and the isolation valves within that, we'll call it a manhole now, it's gonna be converted to a manhole.
The other thing I had under, on page eight, the description of work, it says nothing in there about electric, and we all know that these grinder pumps will have to have electric, so we will be going into the homeowner's home to get electric to run these grinder pumps. Uh, is that something we're doing in-house and if they don't have the capacity on their breaker panel, will we put like a sub panel on there?
Uh, to answer your first question, uh, yes, it, it will require electrical service to be done and modifications to their panel. Uh, we have, um, with our sub consultant, an electrical designer, visited all three houses and looked at the panels. Um, two of the houses have ample capacity, it's just a matter of rearranging breakers. One house, uh, does require an upsize of their service to a 200 amp service, which is a standard size for common residential construction these days, but uh, that is intended to be included in the project, correct?
And it's say, and I, there's three homes that are currently not or that.
They're on gravity.
That, yeah, or on gravity and that.
Okay, so those three homes, after they get the grinder pumps and everything, they will maintain those going forward though, okay.
Yep.
That's just, yeah.
And that was pretty clearly spelled out in the agreement that they signed.
Yep, okay, good.
And the only other thing I've seen on that is, I know it's, may sound petty to you guys, but I just want to bring it up. When you're in the contract that we're gonna be doing, it mentions the City of Lawrenceburg on page 59. Wouldn't we want to have in parentheses LMU as the, uh, entity that's paying for it, so to speak? Uh, well, I'm just saying, I mean, as it looks right now, when you look at page 59, it says it's just the City of Lawrenceburg. Agreement is between the City of Lawrenceburg, I thought maybe we should put in there in parentheses LMU, this is my thoughts.
Or really, it should be just LMU period.
Okay.
Uh, I thought as well, but, I mean.
I, I don't think, look, the city should be mentioned at all.
Okay, I'll revise the documents to transfer any reference to the city to LMU.
Yeah, 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 okay. Questions, uh? Anyone see anything, any issues with getting it taken out to bid?
Nope.
And then I'd entertain a motion to allow BFNS to move forward with the Bodie Lift Station Project to, uh, send it out to bid.
One thing too, that is in the capital, capital, capital improvements, correct, Garrett, I think so.
Partial, yes.
Yeah, it wa, there wasn't quite enough money in that project.
Gotcha.
It's a little higher than what I believe it was originally.
So you just move money around?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion in, ma'am.
Okay, second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Very well, thank you.
Appreciate. Okay, uh, Dell, you wanna talk more, first about the, the resolution on the Wawa potential?
Yeah, we can do that.
That's one that's not on your agenda, guys.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm gonna write that in there. Yep.
Sent to you on Friday.
And I'll just read the whole thing and then I can ask the questions and Garrett, I can as well, and thanks for staying, Garrett, so. This would be, uh, proposed resolution of the Lawrenceburg Municipal Utilities, uh, Utility Service Board to accept and assume a water and sewer line under certain conditions, so when we say accept and assume, that means that, uh, and we do this with, with roads, with water lines, sewer lines, other, uh, private property that then becomes city property, we'll add that to our inventory so long as per Garrett's assessment and his team, it, it conforms exactly to the standards of, uh, that we would require if we built it ourselves, and BFNS is actually involved in that project as well, so. They'll, they're gonna build it, they're gonna pay for it, everything, and they're gonna hook it into the line on 50, and then if it's conforms to our standards, we'll take it over, so then going forward, we'll maintain it and, you know, own it as if it was our own. The reason that I'm, I'm asking to, you guys just consider this, uh, today, and I appreciate it, and I gave it to you on Friday, which is not the way you guys normally do business, but the developers, and there's multiple developers involved, there's two pieces of property and business owners and then a representative from more than one business, they're seeking assurances that we are going to accept and assume the lines, uh, so that they can move forward with the project and the businesses that will go in, in there. We were kinda hoping that we could do this as we were doing the work on Route 50, but this is gonna happen much sooner than that, and we'd like them to get started, because we don't wanna lose those two businesses, it's a, a gas station and then uh, another really good business behind it at least, and this, this cul-de-sac and then the water and sewer line that would serve it can open up the potential for even more businesses back there, it's an undeveloped parcel of land that will now have businesses on it, jobs, tax revenue, all that good stuff, so. I'll just read it real quick, whereas Lawrenceburg Municipal Utilities LMU provides public water and ser, uh, sewer service to businesses within and beyond the City of Lawrenceburg, Indiana, whereas LMU seeks to foster and encourage the commercial development and property within its service area, and whereas Capital Growth Buckhalter Incorporated, referred to as CGB, in coordination and cooperation with other developers, business entities and property owners, has planned a development on U S 50 that would bring at least two significant businesses to the city at revenue and customer base of the utility, create jobs, generate sales and property taxes and activate property which currently unused and undeveloped, and whereas CGB and its partners are requesting that LMU accept and assume the water and sewer lines that will serve the project and to assist in constructing and hook those lines to LMU's service system now therefore be resolved. Lawrenceburg Utility Service Board as follows, LMU agrees to accept and assume the privately constructed water and sewer lines that serve the above mentioned pro, projects so long as they conform to the specifications of LMU at LMU's discretion, that once these lines are accepted and assumed, they will be dedicated as public utility lines, be treated as LMU-owned infrastructure for all purposes, including maintenance and replacement, that CGB and its partners agree to construct the lines entirely at their cost and to fund any out-of-pocket costs involved in the acceptance, assume slash dedication process, it would not be covered by LMU in their normal course of business, and Mayor Kelly Milan has hereby authorized signing documents to take any additional steps necessary to finalize the accepting and assuming slash dedication of these lines, they've been certified to comply with all LMU's specifications per LMU staff.
Questions?
Okay, the mains, you got them in li, in there, those lines, I call them mains. Are they gonna be? I see, how, how can I put that, size so where you can have more than just the two in the future?
Yeah, absolutely, um, we're probably looking at an eight inch, um, depending on, uh, what the, what the water needs, I mean, the gas station is not, which is not gonna need very much. Um, but the other two parcels, and I, I'm pretty confident that eight inch will feed them, but, um.
That's an eight inch water line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Water main, yep, so, um, and then it'll have fire protection, um, Johnny, it got to me and asked me to make sure that, uh, there's gonna be a fire hydrant back at the cul-de-sac and so that everything has fire protection on it, so.
So then we will also put, or they will, I should ta, say, put in a new sewer main and be able to have laterals off of that for additional.
That, yeah, that's correct, um, and that's gonna run across the parcel back towards.
Goodyear.
Goodyear, yeah, there's a manhole back there that they'll have to tie in because there's no sewer main on that side of the, the road yet, but it's gonna be adequately sized so that whatever they put in there will be able to tie into the, to the sewer and be able to go forward from there.
The only other question I have, I realize that we're gonna assume responsibility for them, which is normal, but what do we do about from their business to the main with their lateral, will they be responsible for that if ever goes bad?
Absolutely.
Like normal, the same with the water line, they will be responsible for that as well.
Yeah, they'll be responsible for that.
To the meter or however that was.
Right, right, to the, to the first shut-off connection.
So we're, LMU is really just taking responsibility for the mains that you're putting, they're putting in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And it's just like any other, like my house, if my.
Yeah.
Water line goes bad, I'm respons, I got you.
Yeah, yeah, and then Wawa's just agreed to put it in.
Can't happen soon enough.
Right, right, and then that's the thing, it's, it's gonna happen quicker, we wanted to do it like Dell was saying, that, when we did the whole project on 50, but it looks like it's gonna be quicker than that, so. They'll tie into the existing line that's there and then we'll switch it over when we get the easements to do the rest of the, the.
That's what I was gonna ask, Dell, where are we with the easements for the rest of 50?
Um, we have them all drafted, uh, we had a meet, we had a team meeting, so we've got them drafted, uh, they're, part of this project is to cross over a, a couple parcels to put a new manhole in, um, probably saying it all wrong, but they're all ready and there are multiple easements that we're gonna have these developers execute for us, so we can, it's just better that way for us, and we've got easements with NDOT, so. As far as I know, everything's going according to plan, um.
What do you think the timeline on those will be?
Um, soon.
Okay. So that water main, will, will it tie into the hydrant that's in between the property where Wawa's building and the sewer plant? And then go in front of them and then back behind everybody else, or is it gonna start behind the?
The new one?
Yeah.
The new one's gonna be right on fif, it's gonna be in the easement out, out on 50.
So it is gonna stay on 50, we're not going through anybody's.
No, but we need easements because of the rideaway is just so littered with stuff right now that, that we can't get it in there.
I was thinking easements, I thought we were going through their property, stay off of it.
No, we, we're asking for, uh, what was it, 30 foot easement?
Gotcha.
Thirty more, 30 more feet past, behind the rideaway, and we're also asking for that to be LMU only. So that they can't come in and put stuff on top of us to where we can't fix stuff and repair, yeah, cause what's out there now on 50, I mean, we, if that line, you know, you had to dig in it, we're, we're gonna tear something out getting into it.
Problem, a lot of problem with the water main.
Yeah, right.
Well, wide in 50 probably didn't help a lot that back from Cayman Cave.
Right, right, there's just been so much stuff there, so, yeah, we're, we're trying to get those as LMU-only easements.
And all the easements are drawn and ready to be executed, so some of them will be executed through this project and the rest will be executed as we get, so.
So the time, the timeline is based upon the project?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that work's already done, they've surveyed and drawn them up and the legal descriptions, so. Is that any to your question?
Yeah. What number, Mr. Fettie?
This, this is just for utilities, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's go with number five.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, for hearing this and giving it to me Friday.
There you go. It's an important project, it's an important project, and it's.
Add time review.
It's in the TIF area, we can, you know, it's a big, it's a big to-do.
Yes.
For us, so. Okay, uh, any other questions regarding this resolution? So I entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024 dash five, which is Lawrenceburg Municipal Utility Service Board Resolution to Accept and Assume a Water and Sewer Line Under Certain Conditions.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Thanks, guys. Okay, uh, the next item in the utility board is the, uh, Seagram's Landfill Transfer Resolution, you guys remember the meeting we had regarding the landfill that's owned by LMU, but in order to apply for the grant that we're applying for, it has to be transferred to the city, which you'll find in the city's agenda later, but uh, do, do you guys need more explanation of that, we've got the folks here?
Yep. We will cut and dry.
Okay.
In my opinion, that is.
If not, uh, this is Resolution Number Six?
Well, is this tie, is this tied in the same one with the city? Cause if it's the city, it's nine.
This is just LMU.
So the, so let's go with six then.
This is for the transfer to?
So, so basically Dell will have a six and then, of course, the city will have. Second. Yep, yep.
Six?
Yep.
All right, I can count. All right, sorry about that. Okay, um, so I enter, uh, entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number Six dash 2024, which, uh, Lawrenceburg Utility Service Board Resolution to Approve the Transfer of Real Property in Pursuit of the Funding for, in pursuit of funding for the environmental remediation.
So move.
Who we got, Tony?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Lenny? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, guys. And I wanna thank Atlas for all the work they're doing on this to make this project, uh, as close to a delta zero as we can get. We're, we're counting, I hear you, I hear you, I hear you. Okay. I have no old business for the USBs, anyone else?
Uh, yeah, probably old business, I missed the VAC truck demo, what, what did we learn or what, what's next?
I was impressed with it, yeah. I was impressed with it, yeah. I think it has saved, it probably saved us all working on comp claim for one, but what, the thing I liked about it is that it's portable, it's all one unit, and it is set up to where it will not snap about. It will torque, but if he has an eight-inch valve and they don't know how far it's open or closed, it will count the turns, it's like three times.
Three times plus three.
Thing is plus four. And they can actually tell what size magnet, what size magnet is, I was impressed.
Cool.
Yep.
So what's our, what's our next step then?
We're going to send it out for quotes.
Right.
The big, the reason we had to kind of redo it is because it's, it explains it better maybe because it was three, it's really, it's three things, we need one thing. So it was three parts and they said it separately, so we're going to redo it. So it's, it was actually good to take a reset.
Right, and just, you know, from a little information too is the one we demoed the other day, it comes in a couple different pieces like it also. It also comes in as a skid that goes on top of the trailer. Where you can take the skid and put that on a, on a truck. We are about ready to replace a little dump truck that we have. It's 20, about 25, almost 25 years old. There's a new kind of truck that comes out where you can interchange beds. So I'm going to look into the cost of that to be able to put that, just the skid thing on it. Because then that would bring the price of the valve exercising machine down because we wouldn't need the trailer, we would just need the skid. And then we could put it on the truck and you don't have to pull both of them together in the, in the same thing.
And he said that'd bring the price down like seven grand, didn't he?
Yeah, yeah, so, and that could go towards the, the truck in which I believe I got the truck on the, in the capital plan to, to be replaced. So that's, that's just something that I want to look into. I haven't looked, their Stow and Go, I think, was the name of the thing. It's, basically what it is, a little dump truck, it's like a little roll-off. And you can put different beds, you can put a dump bed on it, you can put a rollback bed on it, you can put a flat bed, anything. So it's, it's a really versatile little truck that you could use for a bunch of different things. And like I said, I just want to see what the cost that is, see if it's feasible to do that.
And the valve exerciser will definitely make their life much more efficient because for the thousands of valves that we have, if they have to get down to all of those. I mean, it's much quicker, yeah, so.
Yeah, I think the.
I think the bigger piece, I don't think I interrupted you, but the bigger piece of this is it, it won't snap as out.
Right, right.
It's set up, that's the nightmare then.
Which.
Well, they said that it's still possible, but if it, like, basically if it's going to break, it's because it was going to break no matter what.
Right, right.
Yeah, we were going to pay, we were having that problem anyway.
We'll be able to lease that out to the other cities like Greendale or.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Hey, we, you ain't going to be using, somebody not going to be on that every day.
Where they talk, they will have, they will have downtown one year and go to the hilltop next year and then flip back, start doing it every year.
We got, this is something that, this is a maintenance program.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, and little foresight too is IDIM is going to start mandating this because of the, the potential, right, because of the, well, I don't know how to do it with the stormwater, but the potential of having a major outage because of you not be able to shut down the valves and just do a small portion of your town or whatever. So, and like I said, unfortunately, that, that 12-inch that runs through town that we had the problems with on the other one, those were valves that weren't domestic. They were cheap and we're probably not going to be able to save any of those. So when those, I mean, those, those are just not very good valves to put in. They shouldn't have put those in, but they did back in, in the day, so.
Yep, hey, we've made our money back.
So, yeah, so hopefully by next meeting, we'll be, I'll be able to have some numbers and get everything together and we'll, we'll be able to go from there.
Thank you, Garrett.
Also, we got the, we got the street lights lit up finally, so.
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah, good.
Yeah, I mean, we're kind of working through the kinks a little bit, but we should have a smoother process going forward. So, I mean, Garrett was ready right away, it was me, just needed to put it together. So we'll get them to go on faster and faster if you go.
So that's the street lights from Walnut High now, yep.
Just so you know, we appreciate all you're doing while we don't have utility director.
Yeah, we do.
Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that, we really do.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
And you bailed me out of my, my house flooded the other day. Him and Jared and Bill both beat me back to my house, water off and saved my butt, so thank you.
Right, so you guys make my job easy, I come and ask for money and you give it to me. It's easy to get stuff fixed that way.
Cut that out of the video.
Don't come to the well too many times.
Don't pick up Billy's bat.
Okay, no other old business, I'll entertain a motion to approve the claims.
So move.
Second?
I'll second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I'd like to call to order the City Lawrenceburg Council meeting for November 4th, 2024. If we all could rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One more time, Mayor, Mr. Fiddy?
All right, we got Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Dylan Little.
Present.
Councilperson Tom Roulette.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
We got City Attorney Dale Wilton.
Here.
Mayor Kellin Alon.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, announcements, just a reminder, everyone, go out, get out and vote if you already haven't tomorrow morning or tomorrow. I wanted to, before we get into board reports, I've invited the ladies, girl, LHS lady soccer team. I don't know if I should call them girls or ladies, but I'm saying it's lady soccer team, okay? I've invited them to our meeting on November 18th. We're going to recognize them. I got a couple things that I'll inform you guys of, I don't want everybody to know what it's going on. But I'll let you guys know, but we're going to have them here at the meeting. I know the school is doing a couple other things, I've been working with the school. They called, or I called Mr. Knigga and Mr. Galey and Mr. Leicher yesterday and then yesterday we spoke and then they got back with me today on some things they're going to do. And then I, you know, figured this would be a good thing for us to do. And I got, I got some ideas, I'll run by you guys.
Awesome.
Great, only a matter of time before they busted that seal.
Oh, my goodness.
Both boys and girls programs have been so good historically.
Unbelievable, now, now all we need is the football to keep going and wish them luck this Friday night at Batesville, at Batesville. Final, I think it's final game of the second?
It is. Central finals.
Central finals, yeah. Okay, announcements, board reports, streets, alleys and curbs downtown, Mr. Abbott.
We're doing just fine and I would like to say the street signs are looking fantastic.
I was going to agree.
Yeah, they, they really do look, look classy.
There is one thing I would like to mention that I keep forgetting about is the railroad signals, poles. Some of them look like they have been painted since like 1938 or something.
We're allowed.
The ones on Walnut, I know, but who do we get a hold of to say, hey, let's get these things fixed?
We can, we could, we'll contact the railroad, I'll get Mike Abbott and get.
Say, ones on Walnut are all right, but the other ones look bad and makes everything else look bad.
Mayor, to add to that, I had Connie Canoe reach out about the alley. She's saying that there was no sign that was added to dedicate to the Eddie Canoe Alley.
I seen a sign up there.
Yeah, I seen one there too.
I don't know where it would be at, but she reached out to me saying.
Was she, was it like a week ago?
Uh, no, it was today.
Because she reached out to me a week ago and said there wasn't one at on Center Street. And I went over and I was out doing my rounds and there's a sign on Center.
There's a sign on Center.
Were they in all of the intersections for the alley or did they replace them in all the intersections?
They replaced everything that was there, probably there, yeah.
I'll, I'll go over and I'll talk to her and see exactly what she's talking about and I'll let you know.
Yeah, and then, anything else?
Yep, that's it for me.
All right, what about streets, alleys and curbs up on the hill there, Mr. Fryman?
Oh, good, sir, thank you.
Okay, Finance Department, Mr. Bondurant?
Uh, Mr. Fiddy does a pretty darn good job, Mayor, that saves, saves me.
Agree with you. Parks and Playgrounds, Mr. Little?
Everything's going good, checked out the parks lately and they've been busy even going into November, so that's nice.
70-degree weather helps.
Yeah.
It does help.
Fire Department, Mr. Roulette?
No report, Mayor.
All right.
Can I add something to announcements real quick?
Yeah.
Tony, if this is the correct place, Tony is currently on the Main Street Board.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to resign from the board, Dylan's shown interest to step up to it.
Do we need a motion on that or anything, or?
We, let's go ahead and get one because those are usually done at the first of the year. So I'll entertain a motion to replace Mr. Abbott and accept his resignation to the Main Street Board and have Mr. Little be assigned. Anybody want to, want to form that in a motion or?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Make that motion?
I'll make it.
Make it, Tommy, second?
Second.
Brett?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, consider it done.
Thank you.
You want me to let Mr. Kreider know or you?
Yeah, you can, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and then we had a work session on 10:28, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, new business, Mr. Allen Weiss, CASA update to Mayor and Council. By the way, we appreciate you doing this.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council and Mr. Fiddy. Mr. Wilton, thank you for allowing me to be at your meeting. I think it's only right that since Lawrenceburg's been investing in CASA for years now that we should be here at least quarterly, give you an update on how your investment is going. And I look at it as an investment in our organization and we should be doing the right things with the money that you donate. And I'm happy to report to you that things are going very well with CASA. One of the big things that's happening right now, we have our youth ambassador program. It's been around for quite a while, but it struggled last year, last couple of years. I think last year, the end of the year, we had 12 participants out of the three high schools. We got over 50 now.
Wow.
I think there's 53. We have, so what we did is we've hired two youth coordinators, part-time. They're only allowed to work so many hours a week, but they are, I will just say this, they're giving a lot more than what they're turning in in their hours because they're dedicated. One is Kara Good, Ryan Good's spouse. And then Cam Spence, who's a graduate, recent graduate of South Dearborn High School. He's been in the youth ambassadors for the four years he was there. But what we did, we sat down, had a brainstorming session, said what works, what doesn't work. And what wasn't working is the ability to get all those students down here to Lawrenceburg for two meetings a month. So what we're doing now is like if East Central, their group, we go to East Central, we have a meeting with the East Central kids, then we go to South Dearborn, have it up there, and then we go to Lawrenceburg. And then once a month, those that can attend, and last month, just last week, was 27 members of that group, we meet at Manchester Elementary School. We try to figure out a way that's kind of.
Middle?
In the middle. And Manchester, the South Dearborn School Corporation, they were thrilled to have us. Last couple of weeks, Red Ribbon Week, we were big in that, all the schools. Even our ambassadors were really involved in doing a good thing, so that's a great thing. Got good news yesterday, we got a $5,000 grant from, I think it's Siemens or Seamer's Milling out of West Harrison. Their headquarters is in Effington, Effingham, Illinois. So they have a foundation, Southern Illinois Community Foundation, Regional Foundation that they, because they have a business in Dearborn County, offered their grants open to Dearborn County. So I sat down with two youth coordinators and we put together this application, got news yesterday that we got five. Doesn't seem like a lot of money, but when I was talking to the representative from that group, they said five is usually the highest they go. I asked for 10, but they'll go for five. And that's going to be put toward our youth event that we have every March. This year it's going to be March 5th at the Event Center. And they're really excited this year and putting on a good event. Well, we just look at that, what's work, what works, what doesn't work. We're trying to revamp it where it will work. That event is where we get eighth graders from all the county schools in St. Lawrence. They come there for pretty much a full day of prevention activities. What we're all about is prevention. So, you know, we're doing very well. I mean, I, I think it's only going to get better. I think I myself, with help of my youth ambassadors, we've raised in donations and other grants, close to $25,000 just since the first of the year. But it's project-oriented, one project was getting anti-vaping materials to all the schools. South Dearborn's got them in all their schools, elementary and everything. East Central's got for their middle school and high school. Lawrenceburg's got them in Central, Greendale Middle and the high school. And these are something through the generosity of different organizations, Tri-Cappa being one of them. We were able to do that in the library. I think Tri-Cappa donated money so we can put one of those anti-vaping information kits in the library over here. So we're getting our name out there, we're doing the right stuff. And I just felt it's, it's, we need to be here quarterly to let you know how, how we're doing. And so I do appreciate you very much with your support. Hope it continues in the future. And I guarantee if you have any questions, you come to me and I'll give you the, give you an answer. And I'm so proud of how this organization's going because I'll tell you, the first three months I was doing this, it was like drinking from a fire hose and, but it's all going very well.
You seen it was worse than being the mayor?
I enjoy being the director of CASA very much, so, you know, I sleep in at some mornings. I think today, I, I had a meeting in Batesville at 10, so, but I didn't get up till 8:30. And I just laid there, I have nothing going on really pressing right now, so. But I know I was supposed to put on my paper about being on the agenda, about my handing out anything, but our youth coordinator, Cam Spence, he's 19 years old, he put these together. And so I thought I'd hand these out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
You know.
Thank you, Alan.
I had a meeting with the.
Thank you.
Principal at Jacksonville High School. And they're so thrilled about what we're doing. They, they would like to become a part of us, but they're in Ripley County. But I'm trying to work out a way to where, it seems like Jacksonville and Mylan are kind of those islands by themselves. You got Batesville and Versailles, South Ripley doing all their thing. And the Forgotten Schools are, so I'm going to try to work with them because I think what, why not regional, is to work with them to try to see if they could put together their own event. So they're going to bring some of their students, high school students down where they have a SAD program, Students Against Destructive Decisions, similar to our youth ambassador. They're going to come down and look at how we do our event. And I, I'm going to try to help them, you know, put together an event next year or so for themselves. And I think that's a win-win-win, you know. But thank you very much, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to ask or answer.
We appreciate all that you do, so.
What's that?
We appreciate all that you do, thank you.
We appreciate the support that Lawrenceburg's been, we've had our ups and downs, but I think we're on the uphill climb and we're going to keep on moving that way. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next item is ordinance number?
Nine.
Nine? This is the second reading of the Electric Rate Ordinance. I'll read it in title only and then we'll have a vote for a potential adoption. Um, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash nine, an ordinance establishing a revised schedule of rates and charges for electric utility services to be collected from users of the city's electric utility system. Questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, uh, rule call, please.
Councilperson Tony Abbott? Aye. Councilperson Dylan Little?
No.
Councilperson Tommy Roulette?
Aye.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman?
Aye.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the electric rate ordinance, uh, number twenty twenty-four dash nine passes, uh, by a vote of four to one. So moved, or it's adopted. All right, next item, number ten?
Yep.
I'm just.
Water, yeah.
Yep. Uh, this is the water, uh, rate ordinance, uh, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash ten, an ordinance establishing a revised schedule of rates or charges for waterworks utility services to be collected from users of the city's waterworks utility system. Uh, I'm in a motion to approve and adopt, uh, being this is the second reading.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, rule call, please.
Uh, Councilperson Tony Abbott?
Aye.
Councilperson Dylan Little?
No.
Councilperson Tommy Roulette?
Aye.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman?
Aye.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant?
Yeah.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash ten, uh, is hereby adopted and passed by a vote of four to one on the second reading. I'm assuming this is number eleven.
Yep.
All right, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eleven, an ordinance establishing a revised schedule of rates and charges for sewage works utility services to be collected from users of the city's sewage works utility system. I'll entertain a motion to approve the second reading and potential adoption.
Mayor, I would make that motion contingent upon we get that agreement which you'd stated that you're working on with the.
MGP, absolutely, and, uh, just so you guys know, we have a meeting set up for Thursday, the fourteenth.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, rule call, please.
Uh, Councilperson Tony?
Aye.
Councilperson Dylan Little?
No.
Councilperson Tommy Roulette?
Aye.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman?
Aye.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant?
Yeah.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eleven will hereby pass and be adopted by a vote of four to one. The last, uh, resolution I have for you tonight under new business is gonna be resolution number nine. And this is, uh, in response to the transfer we did of landfill property, uh, by the utility board, and this is to accept the transfer, correct?
Yes, sir.
This is resolution number twenty twenty-four dash nine, which is a resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrenceburg to approve the transfer of the real property in, in pursuit of the funding for the environmental remediation. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it, Mr. Roulette.
Mr. Roulette was first, second, Tony? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, guys. That is all I have for new business tonight. Any old business that we didn't, uh, capture? If not, I'll entertain, uh, comments from the audience.
Come on, Pamela.
Have any trick-or-treaters? I know. It's hard up there on the hill.
I had.
You know, you can't walk from.
I had bunches.
Oh, I'll bet, I, yeah, we, we were in, we were out in, in Bright, actually, my daughters, and it was crazy, but. Okay, no old business, no comments from the audience, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the claims.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?